Right, I'm wondering what's going on. Yeah. Okay, everybody, we'll start the meeting at seven oh two, call the meeting to order and we'll say the pledge allegiance. Okay, guess we miss the call?
Yes. Brett's. Tanya here.
Becky here.
Libby.
Here.
Ryan.
Okay, we have a quorum. Uh, the meeting agenda has changed. Beth will not be here tonight because we don't have anybody here, all the people here to approve the budget, so she, we're gonna move that to the next meeting. So I just need a motion to approve the new meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the new meeting agenda with Beth not being on it.
I second.
All in favor?
That's what she was talking about, wasn't it?
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay. And also need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous many meeting August twenty first, two thousand twenty three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute from August twenty first, two thousand twenty three.
I'll second.
Okay.
I seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I guess we don't have any. Okay, so I guess the new business, the first item on here is to elect a new council president. So anybody got a motion?
Oh, I got a motion. I'd like to elect Tanya Davis as president.
I second. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can't hear the.
I am sorry, yeah, no, okay. Okay, so I guess I'm gonna be the new council president. For my term, it would be, it would be the remainder, yeah, January first, yeah, to finish off this year. Yeah. And we also, I guess, need to elect then a new vice president and I'll nominate Ryan Rumel for that.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We already talked to him about it.
He did agree to it, so we didn't just. We had a discussion, so let's, let's hope he stays with that, right? Okay, so now Beth's not here, so we'll be skipping that. Um, council to consider the purchase of a new, uh, new police vehicles to replace the totaled out police vehicles.
Okay, um, as you know, we've had two vehicles in accidents, we've held our accident review boards on them, one of the vehicles is officially totaled out. And, uh, we have found two vehicles in the United States that they have police cars on the lot that we can replace that with, one being in New Mexico and one being in South Carolina. I've attached the stickers for both of the vehicles for the two different places, they each have two of the same vehicles. Um, I was hoping to hear something today from our insurance about the second vehicle. And we're still trying to determine if that one's totaled or not, but currently it has twenty five thousand dollars worth of damage when Officer Pruitt was T-boned on Madison Street. They have not totaled it yet, so, um, I guess this evening I'm going to ask to approve if I could request one vehicle, which I talked to Beth and Missy, and with the insurance money, there's money available to purchase a new vehicle, these are the two quotes that I have found, um, that actually have vehicles on the lot, there are several that are ordered, but Ford does not produce them yet. And as of now, Ford's not accepting orders for twenty twenty four, they're gonna play catch up for twenty twenty three orders. And we've already gotten ours in, so we won't be looking at new vehicles until twenty twenty five. So this evening I'd like to request to purchase one vehicle. And with the possibility of purchasing the second vehicle, if the other vehicle does get totaled out. Um, but I don't know when that will be, myself and Brian and Sandy from Walker Hughes have been on the adjusters and the estimators for weeks now to try to get them to determine a value of what the vehicle was. So, uh, I know Brian and Sandy both sent the adjuster emails today as well as I did, and we hadn't heard anything back yet.
So the insurance money isn't gonna pay for the whole car though, right?
It is not, so the insurance money currently that we have for the one that's totaled out was in the rain, well, and they still have to write us a check for storage fees, they still have to write us a check for any police equipment that we have to purchase to mount in a new vehicle. And they have to, um, pay us for the decommissioning of the old vehicle, because we have to take all the lights and graphics and everything out of the old cars. So that service has not been completed yet because our installer is behind a little bit, but it's in the garage with no front bumper on it waiting to be picked up as soon as we get it decommissioned. So the, um, we're speaking to Beth, if we get approximately thirty thousand out of the other vehicle with the money we currently have with the decommissioning, that would afford the purchase of one of the vehicles, and then Beth said there was money in an account for the other vehicles, I think, would you say the MVH, your account, do you remember, Missy? I think that's what it was. But there was money in that that we could, as long as the other one is total, but I don't wanna jump to conclusions and say it is and then them wanting to fix it.
Okay.
Um, I was unable to get three bids because A, Ford doesn't, they're not accepting any, any quotes for twenty three, and these are the only two that I've found, so I have two bids.
These are new.
These are both new vehicles, yes, to, to try to find a used police vehicle, that's a, the one that's totaled is a twenty eighteen, you'll find them with a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it and uh, police cars get driven rough, so I would not want to purchase that and have to let it nickel and dime the town or the taxpayers have to make repairs.
Do you have a preference of one over the other?
So currently we are, the new ones we ordered this year were the gray, the ones in South Carolina. Um, that's the exact same model we ordered for our fleet this year, the package B eleven, three oh six. The other one is, the only difference in the two is the engine. The one has a three liter, the other one has a three point three liter, which is what we ordered this year. So that would be my preference, but I'm up to, the gray is the preference, the other one is the, the full big sheet, the other one just got cut off with the fuel economy on it.
And do they ship it?
Shipping costs are twenty five hundred dollars per vehicle, it would. Delivery is what every, um, gets it to the lot, and for them to like prep it and do all that, every new vehicle has a destination delivery charge on it. But it would be cheaper for me to drive myself and officers down there, get a hotel room one night, pick up the vehicle and then drive it back than it would be to ship it, even with the hotel room and the cost of gas right now, it's cheaper for us to spend the man hours to go get that than it would be to ship it twenty five hundred dollars a vehicle. So, um, I'm asking this evening if I can at least replace the one, and then if the other one does get totaled, if I can go ahead and get the other one replaced also without having to come back to another meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to replace the one with the option to replace the second one if the current vehicle is totaled.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, council to consider first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three nine eight. A voluntary annexation of two parcels owned by Garen Waters at the northwest corner of CR two hundred west and Fortville Pike.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Adam Zach Wachowski, the planning and building director for the town. Um, this case before you is a one hundred percent voluntary annexation. Um, simply bringing two out of the three parcels that Ms. Waters owns into the town limits. Obviously, right now it's in unincorporated Hancock County, um, and what's prompting it is, uh, for one of the parcels, she's looking to connect to the town's sewer, and so, uh, we talked about the possibility of annexation, the lower rates that she would have on a monthly basis, and also just to, um, obviously square out our town limits in that particular area, um, of, of near our town, and so, um, she was amenable to that, and, uh, her daughters um, own one of the properties with her, uh, they live out of state and we mailed the annexation petition around and they've signed it. Um, so this is simply the introductory reading, um, it doesn't go to the plan commission. It will come back to you all for a formal public hearing as required by law, and then we'll have to provide a fiscal plan um, as we do with all annexations under the law, so, um, again, this is just the first step, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those, thank you.
Questions?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, for the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash eight A.
Nine A.
Nine A. Nine A. Nine A. A voluntary annexation of two parcels owned by Garen Waters at the northwest corner of County Road two hundred west and Fortville Pike.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Uh, old business, I don't need to sign this, we don't sign that. That's what I thought. Um, council to consider appointing an individual to the redevelopment commission and the planning commission. And I think we have one of the applicants here that wasn't here the last time. So if you'd like to get up and yeah. Tell us who you are and.
Hi, I'm Kathy Cannelli. Um, I'm the, the third member, I guess you talked to the other two your last meeting, but I was off in Ireland, um, and I wouldn't have missed that for the world. So my background is that I am, I moved here, built my house, moved in on January first nineteen ninety seven, so I am vested in this community, um, I also recently retired, uh, from teaching for thirty eight years, so I, you know, I have a good background in planning and and, um, developing things, but I don't have a background in building and construction, but I think the fact that I invested in this community is something that stands out. And I don't know if you remember me, but I was, I spoke, I was outspoken last summer, um, when you were, um, hearing, uh, about the apartments that are going up between Maine and Merrill. Um, and I, I, my neighborhood were opposed to that. Um, and, and I spoke from passion, but at that time I, I felt like I really wanted to know a little bit more about the whole process, I think I, I didn't know a lot about the process, so when this position came open, actually, it was my neighbor across the street who left. Um, I thought this would be a chance for me to really give back to my community, the community that I'm vested in and I plan to remain in, uh, for a very long time. So, do you have any questions?
I don't think I do.
No.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
For your interest or wanting to at least offer your time, which, you know, it does take a lot of time. Okay.
Well, that's good.
The one question that I don't know the answer to that you may want to know is, um, under the state law, if you recall, redevelopment, redevelopment commission members, not plan commission, but RDC members are prohibited from owning any single family residential rental properties, does that apply to you? No, okay. Party, yeah, so um, quickly, if you're, just to bring up from last time, if you're inclined, you can pick, you can pick two out of these three members, um, you could put one on the redevelopment commission, one on the plan commission. Um, and on the plan commission, you just have to move Manajewski into the, the, um, appointed or elected seat, and then, um, the, the, the citizen member that would be appointed, um, by law, ideally, you're supposed to have two Democrats and two Republicans for that, and I think we actually have three Democrats and one Republican, so, um, just so you're aware.
Yeah, are you a Republican? You're a Democrat? Okay. Okay. Do the other two have any rental properties? No, I think one of them did, that they had, they have a, they're selling one of their properties, wouldn't that, um?
Right, uh, correct, Mr. McCray.
Yeah, yeah, so he'll be free of that shortly, I would say, right?
I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I didn't know you were back there, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. All right, so are we prepared to make a decision then, ladies? Anybody wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion for Mr. McCray for the RDC.
I second that. All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Planning Commission. So we have Kathy Cannelli and Mr. Chris.
No, Mike Seibert.
Mike.
I make a motion for Mike Seibert.
Mike Seibert?
Yeah, for the planning commission.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you again for your interest, we appreciate that. Okay. So next on the agenda we have, um, this is still a little business, uh, consider holding the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three eight A, a rezone of approximately one point six eight acres at the southwest corner of West Broadway Street and West Garden Street, parcel number thirty dash zero two dash sixteen dash two hundred dash zero zero one dot zero eleven dash zero one seven for commercial neighborhood to commercial community, and that's where the proposed auto zone is going. Adam, do you have something you need?
I do.
Okay.
For this particular item, as you know, this went to first reading, um, it also went to the plan commission. Um, they've issued their positive recommendation, which was unanimous. Um, really quickly, I'm just gonna run through, um, the five different criteria by state law that you're asked to consider in making your decision, so you have that information. Yeah, it'll, it'll pop up here in a second here. There's a bit of a delay there, okay. So the proposed auto zone, if you'll recall, is located, um, near the corner of Broadway Street and Garden or Old Garden Street. Uh, just east of the Three Rivers Bank Credit Union. It's currently zoned commercial neighborhood, and they're looking to go to community commercial, which is a slightly higher intensity designation, and the reason being is because, uh, auto parts stores are not allowed in commercial neighborhood, but they are allowed in commercial community. We can certainly come back to any of this if you have any questions, uh, the plant commission did grant a conditional approval of the site plan, the building elevations, the lighting and the landscape conditioned upon if the, uh, rezone here is successful tonight. Of note, there are three different variances that they'll need to seek as well, and those will go through the border zoning appeals to next month, um, related to driveway width. And let's see, there were two driveway width, uh, I'm sorry, one driveway width variance in the back, and then the, um, setbacks of the building on the north side and the south side needed approval. All right, so we're running through this criteria quickly, um, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Uh, yes, town of Fortville, future growth concept map from March of twenty sixteen identified this area as commercial, you can see it there on the map. Is it consistent with the conditions and the character of the current structures, um, the property is currently undeveloped? However, upon completion of the property, CC zoning would be consistent with the conditions and character of the structure. Third item, is it consistent with the most desirable use of land? Say yes, the comprehensive plan identifies this area as commercial, and given its location along a major arterial Broadway Street, this parcel is also desirable for commercial from a market perspective. Fourth one is, is it consistent with the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction? Would say yes on that, um, that a well-planned project with a high degree of aesthetic enhancements will maximize property values. Um, it should be noted too that, uh, for some of you that were familiar with the building elevations that the plan commission, um, approved, they are different from their, their typical boilerplate. Uh, there, it's an upgraded elevation, uh, and some of the tweaks that they put on there are, are unique, and at least to date, I don't think there'd be another one exactly like that in the country, so, a little bit different, um. Moving on, is it consistent with responsible growth and development, I'd say yes, uh, really for the same response with the previous evaluation item number four. And that was it. So if you have any questions, this I'd be more than happy to address those, and lastly, the public hearing, um, was held at the plan commission, and, uh, there was no remonstrance. Thank you.
So what point does D O N dot decide whether that insurance is gonna be acceptable or not, when does that happen?
That's a good question, um, we, we emailed, um, these plans to the state, in fact, Nathan on the plant commission is also within that. They haven't provided, um, a formal, um, recommendation on it one way or the other, but, um, at least in, in Nathan's glance at it looked like it would be okay to have a full access, uh, point there, they'll probably take a look at to make sure that the site distances as you're traveling westbound on thirty six are okay in terms of the bridge and the guardrail that's there. Um, certainly, if anything, if for some reason something significant were to change, um, then we would go back to the plan commission and have them look at that again. There are some issues with, uh, detention that need to be worked through, um, because the applicant was informed that, according to the county surveyor's office, um, we know that a portion of the, the eastern portion of properties in the floodplain. Um, but, and they're gonna do underground retention tanks, but there was an issue in that, um, even if those tanks are underground, they still can't be within the floodplain area, so they may need to figure out where to put that, but same response in that if there are any wholesale changes to it, then we take it back to the, the public and the plan commission to look at it, so they're working on those issues right now.
Okay. We have any public comment regarding this at all? No? Got questions?
No questions?
Dave?
For, for this issue, just this here. Okay, well, come tell us what it is.
I'm Dave Beatson, I live at, uh, three eighteen Poplar. If Auto Zone comes here, I would like to have them give us their best design, I'm sure they've got A, B, C design standards, try to come in cheaper in different localities, and I think we deserve the best one, because, uh, just a few years ago, we had, we're faced with, uh, BP going to build right across the street from Three Rivers, and, uh, they didn't wanna do anything except block walls, this, no, no aesthetics or anything, and I think we said, Adam Z holds them to, uh, the higher standard, uh, we'll all be happy with that, and, uh, I think they, they've got the money to do it, and let's make them spend a little upfront instead of us having a, a less than desirable design building there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Did they, did they, they send us a rendering of such, did, that, or was that not the actual?
Actually, I think I've got it here in the presentation.
They, they, they have upgraded their standards here, I think Adam said there are some things that, I don't think they have any other stores like this, do they?
No, not, uh, there are stores that have some elements of it, of course, but, uh, not a hundred percent like this, so the materials that they're using are two different types of brick around the entire building, um, they're also projecting the backside of the building a bit, and then the front side of the building a bit. And then they'll be putting in some, uh, faux windows, um, and some decorative lighting on the front element of the building, um, decorative cornice. So, little, little bit different than what you see in other places, and then.
See from Broadway Street.
Um, from Broadway, where you see left side wall over here, this, this would be the elevation, um, with all brick here and the sign. Um, that'd be on the south side, and then the front of the building is facing east towards the parking lot.
So you'll see the backside of the building going around.
And then the backside of the building here would be facing west towards Three Rivers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then if we look at the landscape plan, very heavily landscaped, it's in accordance with the ordinance is, they've got it fully screened, uh, landscape screen of, of evergreen shrubs around the parking lot to form a continuous wall, and then additionally, along that west side of the building, south side, even though they are using different type along that west side of the building, south side, even though they are using different type of brick, um, they're still putting some landscaping back there as well.
Do they have a dumpster and is that there?
They do, yeah, the um, the dumpster is over here on the north side. Um, and that would be uh, masonry while they were originally looking to do wood, but um, after discussions, they did, they're doing masonry to match the building.
The only thing I don't like is is the entrance onto Broadway.
I just, I didn't think in dollars for that just because it's so close to the intersection.
The way people drive and I just don't think it's safe.
Worst case scenario, they'd only have one entrance to get in, which I don't think is bad how it's the parking lot set up. I don't think it would affect that much. And Three Rivers only answers on that same street, on Garden Street too. So, I mean, I don't think there'll be a problem with it if that happens. That's why I was afraid. But if Nathan said that, you know, he, that's what he does. So he might be right, but. Yeah, they got one out too.
But it's, that doesn't bother me where BP is because that curve would have been too hard to get into their place, but this is already an established entrance for Three Rivers, so.
I don't know. Yes, we'll let the professionals decide that, but I don't necessarily care for it either, but.
Or Adam, is there a way to make that exit only, right turn only?
Oh.
And if people wanna go back to the east, they could go around the back to the light?
Yeah, if anything, um. That would probably be the analysis that N dot would do. That is, I I I think there's a very high likelihood that they would allow access onto Broadway. Um, and they'd probably want to get it as far away from the intersection as possible. But usually what it comes down to is allowing full access or allowing right in, right out only. So um. We'll have to wait and see.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave. I'm not, I'm not spoken to.
Dave Beatsen again. Like I was saying, and they got one, two or three designs that they can give you. Of course, they're gonna try to come in as inexpensive as they can in our town. And a fair example of that would be like, go to a Speedway in our town and look at it. And go to the Speedway just a few miles away on Oleo Road. It's brick. It's got a brick dumpster thing. It's got uh, landscaping. It's well-kept. It's clean inside and out. Um. And that's what I want in this too, because because uh, they can do it and uh, we deserve the best. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, I think you're sorry, it went to the planning commission and they approved it like this, right? Am I right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can also be able to control some of that yourself, I guess, moving forward if it's you're satisfied with the way it is?
Yeah, um. The, just as a ref- a refresher for all the the way that it works is that the the plant commission approves these concept um, drawings and um, there's always a possibility that they may be tweaked a little bit. Um, but part of my job will be to make sure that um, it's very similar to what you all saw and what the plant commission ultimately approved. So and in this particular case, um, the way the procedure can also work frankly is that you just go through the the rezone process first. Um, and then you move on to plant commission review with these documents, but in this particular case, since it was um it was a a fairly uh, smaller type of project, it made sense to combine everything, have everything out in the open all at once and it's more efficient that way for everybody, so. Uh, they also, um, the other thing I didn't mention too is they do have um, a stone veneer at the base, which is different from the brick. So there's really three different types of actually four different types of materials that they've got on the building. Ephesus is the part that you see around the the front entryway, um, which will also have a red canopy as you walk in.
Okay. With that in mind, do we wanna make a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve, excuse me, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three. As present.
Dash eight eight.
Oh, dash eight.
All second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
And then this one, you can go ahead and sign.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a, I got a little thing on. I have to have a little bit of an instruction. Okay. Uh, departments. Joe, you got anything for us?
I've got a few updates for you and a few requests, I guess. Um, the water treatment plant, they they've given me a scope and it looks like it's gonna be two more months and then they should be done and out of there. Um. I know last week they were running mainly on the new plant with some of the old plant up and running. The old plant is not softening any longer. So they're softening with just the new treatment plant. And they went out to the far ends of our system and checked the softness and it was like ten grains of hardness, so it's it's softening and doing what it's supposed to do. But with that, um, Dave did tell me that both of the pumps for the softeners at the new plant malfunction Friday, so they're working on that to make sure. There's a lot of bugs are having to work out, so it is taking a little bit longer. Um, hopefully sometime in the next couple of weeks, if you guys are interested in going out and seeing the old plant before we tear it down. I think it'd be nice for you to see the old plant and then go in and see the new plant because uh, I think they're talking two to three weeks start to tear the old plant down. You just get with me and I'll take you out. You had to schedule that with me anytime you wanna go. Um, the next thing is our paving, as we talked a little bit before. Our community crossing funds that we received last year to do our paving, which stretched through the the winter season end of this year. Um, we got everything done on our list that we applied for. We had funds left over and unfortunately we have to send about a hundred thousand dollars back to N dot. They sent us a million dollars. We got all the projects done, probably even better than what we originally was gonna be doing them. And we've got about a hundred thousand dollars we'll have to send back. But with that, we do have funds left over because the project did come in under or the contract was one million four hundred and sixty thousand and we're about one point two right now. So that hundred thousand that goes back to N dot is set aside in the like the grant fund that they had given us, so we'll just send that back to them. So we still have the funds left over that we were gonna spend for our match. So with that, I can't apply that to any of the match money from N dot, so I would have to separate that out to do some other projects. Right now is not a good time to do paving in Fortville. We've got a lot of roads tore up and it's hard to get around anywhere. So what I was looking at was, I know Timber Ridge is really rough and Flat Rock Creek is really rough. Um, with the funds we have left over, I found that I could resurface, mill and resurface the entire subdivision of Flat Rock Creek. So that would allow us to get that done and possibly even have a little money left over from that. Um, if that's okay with you guys, I would like to go ahead and have them move forward on taking care of that subdivision. I I figured that would not interfere with some of the traffic trying to cut through town and side streets and everything, because uh, subdivisions are about the only place we could do that now, I think, without interrupting folks' routes very much. The alley between Illinois Monroe. Um, I did ask them about paving that one to include that. I wasn't exactly happy with the number they gave me for that one, and it's not broken out in a unit cost like what we've already bid, so kind of have to already go ahead and get her. We'd have to go out and get some new numbers anyway, so I'm um, I'm trying to get some quotes on that. So if I can, I've already got two. If I get the third one, um, I would like to go ahead and do that alley as well.
What kind of quotes are coming back?
I can't tell you till I get the third quote. I don't want, I don't give anybody unfair. Monroe, it's the the only alley up there yet that hasn't been paved, so that will finish it out. And I know that that was a commitment that the council had made to the public up there a couple of years ago. We did the one south of that last year and then we were gonna try to do the one north this year, so I'm still gonna try to get that knocked out. Uh. The Main Street project, as you know, it's been done for quite some time, it seems to be, but there's always lingering things. I know the tree in front of Libby still needs to be replaced. They're gonna be in the spring to replace or this fall, I'm sorry, to replace that one. They didn't have them available and the best time to replace them, I guess, is in the fall, so that's when they're gonna do that. That project was still, in order to close it out, uh, we're dealing with CSX and getting invoices from them and getting them paid, so the project remains open until we get CSX satisfied. Part of closing out that Main Street project, and this is just a formality. Um, there's another change order, it's change order number three. There's no money exchanges hands or anything with this one, but they wanna sign this one by the town and the contractor. But as we found out, State Board of Accountants would like to have the council weigh in on the change orders. So if you all could give me the approval to go ahead and sign this change order number three, then I could submit that back to them for their closeout of their paperwork. And that project, let's see, the original contract amount was one million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred dollars. And it's gonna come in probably close to about ten thousand under. Real close, that's kind of what it's looking like. So I'm pretty good about that project. But if I can get the approval to sign off on that change order, like I said, there's no money that changes hands. It's just a formality and I can get that back to them.
Sure. Are we okay with that? Do we need to make a motion for that? I make a motion to approve the change order number three.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for that. And then the the last thing that I have is, and I did talk with uh, Missy and Beth a little bit about the funding for sidewalks for this year, and I think I brought up with you guys at the budget meeting as well. Um, I've got a long list of sidewalks need to be replaced. Um, I've been getting unit prices from contractors to give uh, to do some paving or some con- concrete work. But I got some sidewalks, I've got some curbs. I like to replace those curbs in the parking lot on Main Street. We've got some sidewalks that have been busted up from either water mains or trucks driving over them. And then we've got some other sidewalks that are just really bad and heaved up from tree roots and stuff like that, so um. Would like to get approval to spend, I'm thinking eighty to eighty to a hundred thousand this year in sidewalk, concrete curb work. If uh, and supposedly the funds are available for that. But before I move forward, I wanted to get your blessing.
Does that include the Hellcrest sidewalks too?
It does. Yeah, there's one out there that's really, really bad that I've got my eye on, I think.
Well, that's the one in front of Gary's house.
Well, if you wanna put that on the list as a if you wanna put that on the list as a requirement, then I'll I'll make sure it's done.
Done and Gary has mentioned it to me fifty times.
And we can make sure to get that on the list. The thing is, it was it's not a big section. It needs to be knocked out. It's a, it's not. But there's, there's actually a couple of places on Michigan Street that was tore up by the oversized loads that went up and got on the walks and unfortunately, they're they were new walks and they got damaged and it looks awful, but uh, there's, there's cracks. But they weren't I don't, haven't looked at them lately, but they weren't tripping points at the point, at the time to where we had other walks in town that were heaved up and really bad shape, so we're trying to get the worst ones first, so. That's. Yeah, so if you're okay with, yeah. I I, it's nice to have it memorialized, yes. Um, I'm thinking eighty to a hundred thousand, so.
A motion to approve eighty to a hundred thousand to be spent on sidewalks, including the one in front of Gary.
Does that work, Alex? Okay.
All in favor? Opposed?
Come on, Gary. You just have to know people.
It's in between you and you and Bob.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On Merrill Street.
Gary, Gary's got the house that was hit by the car about a year, she's going for the whole porch off the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Joe? I got a question for Joe. What have you, you and Patrick, I'll include Patrick in this. Did you guys look into the uh, this speedometer signs, the digital speed signs that we were talking about? The place in a couple of different places.
Quotes. I've got Brian on there. Compare the apples to apples. Um. In fact, I'm talking with Adam, the Mount Vernon North. Folks did contribute some funds.
Did they really?
So, yeah, so I wanted to uh, see how many we can get for the best price that can do the best job, and I know that there's a a place that I've got in mind up on uh, North Merrill as you come in town, but uh, it should be a good place to locate one.
I think out here on thirteen would be another good place to just I think that just makes people look maybe and see how fast they're going.
Pretty close to where we had a officer.
Yes, right there. That is, that is the part I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I have some people over there that contact me a lot about that. Yeah, yeah.
What I was looking at is pretty much trying to do all roads coming into town, have those on there, but unfortunately, the cost of them was they may take a few years to get them.
I looked at it. You wouldn't think something like that would cost like that.
Jay, what would you just like to do about the sign in front of the building here?
Well, it was, it was money put in the budget for that, the proposed budget. And Beth would have been here and actually would have brought that up against you. I I tell you, we have just got so much stuff going on, it's just, it's, it's on the back burner, but it's still there. In fact, we're looking for money in the budget to, to, to cover that.
I would like to do something out there, really. He's my choice. He has time, yeah.
I'd ask him about it.
Yeah. Ask if I could talk to him too.
Okay.
I haven't seen him for a while and I.
He's trying to stay late a day this week.
It was at my house. So I assume it will be in town. I don't know the schedule. I know uh, most of them in town are picked up on Wednesdays, so I would say probably not, but I would probably, I'd wanna double check. I have not heard anything from C.
I tried to look it up online, couldn't find it.
Waste management.
The funny thing in Indianapolis, they, they send me a text message telling me that the trash isn't coming or whatever. They don't do that here. Actually.
Waste management would send us notifications from time to time, and that's usually how I know whether it's gonna be late or not. I didn't get anything this time, so I can't, I don't wanna guess and.
Better safe than
Okay.
Okay. Adam, you got anything for us?
No, no, Camille, if you have any questions.
Ephesus, he's not here? Patrick, please?
I had a question for Alex about the vehicles. Missy always signs. Is there a way to get a limited power of attorney to deliver the funds and sign the dock fees and how does all that work? How, since we're going out of state for a vehicle purchase? Normally, Missy just comes to the dealership with us and signs everything.
I'm trying to save some funds.
You should be able to wire it.
Like signature for title documents and things like that. It always goes to town of Fortville.
With DocuSign. Technology is your friend. You can't do it that way. Yeah.
I tell you, my last board that I had just purchased, I signed everything on my phone.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't even.
I didn't know if, if just a, a question I didn't know an answer to, so.
Should be able to do it all through the new.
Okay. Yeah, I'll check with the
They wanna sell it, they should be able.
Right, they should accommodate.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have questions for me.
Missy, do you have anything for us?
Um, just that we received another small opioid distribution. There were restricted and unrestricted funds as well, just over seventeen hundred dollars, but it's still money for the police department. Just over seventeen hundred dollars, but it's still money for the police department.
That's good, great.
Yes.
I have a question.
Drug test kits. The, the restricted funds, we usually buy our drug test kits with. That way we can test the substances we're finding on the street. The unrestricted funds, we usually try to hold on to that until there's a need somewhere. And then compile whatever funds we get between that and then the gun permit funds that we can, we can use for equipment or training or whatever else we may need. You had a question for it though? Oh, okay.
Alex, you got anything for us?
I don't, unless you have any questions for me.
Think so. Uh, any public comment?
I have a question for Joe. Um, you said that there was some extra money left over and, um, you were going to pave some, some of the, uh, some roads and subdivisions. You said both Timber Ridge and Flat Fork needed it.
Flat Rock, yes.
Flat Rock. But you're just going to pave Flat Rock? Did I misunderstand?
Well, as long as, the, the numbers came in so close that they could do all Flat Rock and there's not much left over. So I have to see where we are once that is completed.
Why did you choose Flat Rock?
Because it is smaller. The funds that were left over, I could do the entire subdivision. If I go to Timber Ridge, I can only do bits and pieces. So I thought it'd be a good time to just finish one neighborhood and then go on to the next.
Okay. Will there be funds available at some point to repave Timber Ridge? It's been there a long.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's in the plans, but I know, uh, every year we try to get our paving done and then we go back to Endot and leverage our funds to get, um, ask for a million dollars for the community crossings for the paving. So if we get a million dollars to them and that's one point three million dollars worth of paving that we end up doing with that, with that money.
Does Timber Ridge on the list?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's rough. We, we recognize it.
Beth, O-Bridge residence, and it doesn't have anything to do with O-Bridge. Um, just transparency sake, could you tell us the year make model and price of the vehicles that you're purchasing?
So the year make model is a twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer Police Utility. Um, it's Ford specialized police units. They have upgraded transmissions, different chips, um, different tires, different little bit I, shorter ride height, um, to keep them lower to the ground to, so they're pursuit rated. So any vehicle I put on patrol needs to be pursuit rated. Um, otherwise there's a liability in that. Uh, they are coming out of South Carolina. The total MSRP on it is forty-nine, six seventy. And the other, um, option we have are Chevy Tahos, which are, um, high fifties for police vehicles that I could find. And then Dodges, I, the one currently, it blew an engine at thirty thousand miles and the other one had a head blown on it fourteen thousand miles and I'll be honest, as long as I'm chief, I'm not going to purchase one because we've sunk a lot of money into Dodge vehicles throughout the years that we've had them. And, uh, we just don't see the, the return in maintenance or resale values. Yes, on the twenty eighteen model, um, the equipment is not going to transfer over, but insurance will take care of that difference in cost. The twenty twenty model, if it does get totaled, those two body styles are the same. And then that equipment should transfer over unless it was damaged and in the accident, which I know like the front corner lights, the red and blue lights were damaged on that. So we won't be able to reuse it, reuse those. But our company that we use, Passive Security Solutions, is our installer for all police equipment. They're going to come take the equipment out of the old vehicles, determine what's still good, what we can reuse in the new vehicles. So, you're welcome.
Sharon Beatson, Fortville. I have a question for Joe and for Adam. I know we're going to be doing all kinds of paving and I know our town's a wreck right now, but it's going to be beautiful, right? I agree. I have something though that I'm looking for into the future. I need to know if in the plans for our public parking lot, if we are going to resurface and remake it look gorgeous like it should, because it's the only public parking lot we have. Are we going to put rechargeable stations for the electric cars in there? Or where are we going to put those in our town? And I hope they're in the plan for them to be put in our town because we're going to be kind of stranded if some of these people start buying electric cars and don't have a place to hook up. So, are there plans?
Okay, so I'll, I'll touch a little bit on the parking lot. So you're talking about the public parking lot? That was part of the concrete work that I'm wanting to do. I want to replace all those old sections of curbs and put in
Thank you.
solid curbs and maybe get rid of some of those planting areas and kind of dress that up. Um, paving won't come in there right away. It may be part of next year, or you know, if we have funds left over, but yeah, we'll, we'll be looking at that too.
Okay. And it, would that be a good time then to put in before, uh, to put in the charging stations?
If there are charging stations to go in there, it would be best to do before it's paved. But we're going to let the council weigh in on.
Okay. Question would be then, are there plans to put charging stations in our town?
The RDC just had a discussion about that and, um, they're going to do some more research on it because there's different types of chargers that are better than others and, and, and try to determine what the need is so far. I was, I personally, nobody else, just me, thought it would be a good idea to put them out at, uh, Landmark Park when you guys at some point do your, your whole program, there'd be a good place out there maybe to put them and they'd still be close to Main Street.
Right.
Since we have such little parking on Main Street.
Right.
And try to dedicate it to just an electric car. I think we'll find that people will probably park in them anyway.
Right.
So you have to be careful, I think, about where you put them. And if you put them in a different area, it might be such that they'd be open more than they would be if they were on Main Street. So there's a lot of discussion still going on about it, but I think that we'll, we'll come up with some kind of solution, I think, but where we don't really know, but we want to make sure we get the right kind for sure.
Oh, absolutely.
And they are very expensive. It'd be, it'd be nice if Tesla would come in and just put in his own chargers for everybody, so.
I think so many. We have to be universal with all the new cars coming out, so.
Well, has it become a problem? Like, are, are electric cars, and I'm going to look at you because you had one, um, are they stranded a lot? Are, I mean, can they not come to Fortville and get back to wherever they came from?
Some of that conversation they had at the RDC meeting was about too, about how long people sit. So if you don't have superchargers or whatever they're called, the boost chargers, they're not going to get a, a significant charge on it in the amount of time that they spend here if they just go have dinner. And if, if they're here a couple hours, maybe they will, but so there's a lot of
Yeah.
thinking that needs to go into that, I guess. And I don't see anybody getting stranded, but maybe somebody would come here with a
Maybe the government will, the federal government will provide some money for that. They're pushing the electric.
Still, we are on the move and we look so good and we look so great. We sure don't want to leave those electric cars stranded.
Be fighting the purchase of an electric car because I like speed and sound.
I just want to put that out there, yeah. Okay, any, any more public? You want to talk, Dave?
Sure.
No, they weren't. Well, the first one, the twenty eighteen was kind of an insignificant. The officer slid on the ice a little bit approaching a stop. The front driver's side of his vehicle hit the rear passenger side of the other vehicle. Minor, the original estimate came out as four thousand dollars worth of repair. Uh, they got the bumper off, the frame was bent, the mounts were cracked and it jumped up to eighteen thousand dollars real quick. Uh, the other one on Madison Street, um, the officer was a little shook up, took off the next day. Uh, just sick strictly because he, he said he was just a little sore, not that he couldn't come to work. He goes, I'm a little sore and if I could take the night off, I think I will. And I, I said, go right ahead. So, but no major injuries, um, which is a blessing.
Okay, anybody got counsel comments?
I just want to say again, I think the police department's doing a great job of patrolling the side streets and stopping people from running stop signs. I see them all the time. And they sit there and make their presence known, which slows a lot of the vehicles down.
Thank you. I'll let the guys know, and girl.
Yeah. You got anything, Livy?
I have nothing, okay.
I don't have anything. Uh, I need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I'll make a, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, eight oh one. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for coming.